Looked off center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got heart attack down there. I'm not hot here.
Well, that's the only one.
It's true.
Be Georgia.
Yeah.
Have the name.
Have you conceived?
Where is he?
And drove three days from there.
All right, at six thirty, we'll call this special city council meeting to order. We have eight of our members here. We're going to skip the invitation this time. We'll have an invitation for town hall meeting. So we're going to go right to item number three.
Got you. We should move our current billing program, which we call the SANS. Okay, so we can get appropriate. We had it since February. And we didn't get the bill on it. So we're still billing on our proposed program due to problems. Also, they're still working on the program to be able to coexist with our meeting. They haven't got that figured out. The last word we had until today was that they could not, didn't know when they were going to be able to do that. As of today, we've got a little bit of little information. But just like last week, we've been waiting, waiting, waiting for this time. So we've been looking into some other billing programs. I've actually, Vanessa and I have done two webinars on billing programs. One was White Mountain. The other was Tater Technologies. Each program can do everything we need to do as far as being able to itemize each one of our lineups, our revenue for water, wastewater, give us a total amount, our expenditures, what man, collectives, our total amount of waters, our total amount of revenue for wastewater. Add, subtract, and appropriate, and we must have the time in our current billing program we have to do now. White Mountain was a really nice program. It was simple once it was run. That program was a little expensive. I believe it was worth it, but we got to watch another webinar on Tater Technologies. To me, it was the same program. It just wasn't as pretty. It wasn't covered in white and black. I think y'all had it in practice. What the program actually cost. After looking at this one, the numbers on White Mountain, which is, I believe, is twice this amount. Not only the startup, it's twice the amount to use the program each year. This thirty-five, thirty-five ninety is not the cost, the cost to be probably reducing part of that fourteen-hour full web-based training because Vanessa's mom knew this. She already knows how to basically operate the basic program. Erin, who has been in the readings, things like that, coaching things. So she's not going to have as much of a web-based. This afternoon, we got a phone call from our UB Max program studying whether we can closer to being able do what we need to do. They finally have pretty much finally trained Vanessa how to take it out. We don't need as much as. So if they're trying to work for us, this is where they want us almost to let them. We have to know something about people to be this long before we can change. That's what we need.
Are they going to go and make some changes by fifteen?
If they can't, if they can't, we need to go ahead and grow the team. And then it gives us the time we need to do our billing. If they can't, we can't wait any longer. I've stressed the point that we only have certain days in the schedule. If we know something by the winter of fifteen that they cannot do what we need them to do, if you know Tyler's program is, get this program in place of that and be able to build on it all of our resources.
Technology is one hundred percent pure business.
Yes, they are, they work hand in hand with the systems leaders of that program. Problem we have with the billing program, it's the mapping program. UB Max did, told us when the first day that it was, yes, we would be able to do it. And they haven't done it yet. That's why we need to use it last month. Because they're behind, not us. And this company guarantees it can straight over. They'll do all the work, including, but after UB Max does this, we actually, it'll take up maybe three days to do the new message. We're done, and we saved twenty-one hundred dollars. Just coming back. So in the next most program, we will, for the survival program, every year service is three thousand five hundred dollars at the most. I say I think it's going to be less than that. But we have to be able to make this change, this is the change. And I said this Tyler Technologies is the same as this White Mountain, this water program. It just doesn't look as pretty. The White Mountain program is seventy-three million plus a dollar per live per active account annually plus twenty cents per billing of every active account. It's a great program, it really is. This program does exactly the same thing. The annual billing interface, it's worth four and a half dollars a year after, which we should do. But we get some of the money through, and those ones that don't, but we get it through student center, which Vanessa ran. So we have no other cost after this initial program. We will go until August. But we think, well, we think this is the best way to purchase this program. Plus six months of free time. Whatever Vanessa needs to learn, we'll be there to teach it. So if we need to go with this program, I'm with you. But we have to have to go with this program. If UB Max cannot do this program, we have to wait.
How long have we had to do that, wait for?
Well, we've been waiting on that for this mapping program now for two months. We've been waiting to use this program since first part of the year.
Well, that's if we don't end up using it, can we get any money back from UB Max? I mean, will they make it right?
I'm going to do my best.
I mean, or because if we can't use it, they should be able to make it right.
And I think working with Vanessa can probably understand that because he's had a point being pressured. And now he's the one calling, Vanessa. Everybody's stressed, everybody's, oh, we, Vanessa can say eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
This is her book. We just, we just got some problems with that footage. And UB Max can't fix the problems I'm asking Vanessa to fix. We've got to make a change. Those are problems, not the problems.
Any further questions? Comments?
So. But you are going to try to make UB Max know.
No, we'll get on, we'll get on to fifteen, that's as far as I can do.
Right, right, right.
Vanessa found out, she found out some stuff today. And so we should know by the end of this week, we should know tomorrow whether the mapping programs are working. And if it doesn't, I would probably tell them if they can fix something, we'll use that program.
Okay, so you actually have a motion to, except if you did.
Yes.
If UB Max cannot make a range of, fix their program, okay?
Because it could play to our regular possibility, like in particular, on the program. It's out of our call, really old.
I'll make that motion.
Who makes the motion, there's a second? George seconds. Any further discussion?
Is that, we, I mean, all of us?
I guess they're part of the, yeah.
Yeah, and we, yeah, the program doesn't work, which, you know, go through all that, that, you know, make sure it doesn't work, it's not going to work, and be, you know, reliable and everything. It's, and, you know, and do our best to get what we can without making it right.
All four raise your hand. All of you at the same time? Motion passes.
On the item number four, is anyone insurance? Do you know my health insurance, that's been a great change due to the health issues of sitting back in front? The price of the preferred employee went from six hundred and nineteen dollars a day to sixty-four dollars a day. At this time, we just think that it's the best, we leave it as is. Just accept the new change without any other changes. So we can look at our budget stuff. We shall have to make a motion to.
That's only other thing. They, they have the twenty thousand of mine in the first place. And we talked about whether we can do that, which is what we need to do.
We're still getting, we're still getting the bill.
Still getting, yeah. So we're still going to take money, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at.
But it's the same amount of insurance.
Same plan.
Same plan and everything.
This would allow us also, at this current time, the employee would have to pay, you know, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars to insure their spouse's, all insurance. Y'all pass this, the employee will only have to pay four hundred and seventy. And then that extra twenty cents, it's, it ups their lifetime to twenty thousand, forty thousand. So this time, I would say that this people need to accept the change of our life insurance.
We're fourteen, fourteen twenty-five to just one thousand sixty-nine? Or like a family type thing?
None of our employees have their spouses on it at this time, so we're only looking at the new rate change of six hundred, four hundred and sixty-four eighty-eight. You have twenty cents to that. So it's going to be four sixty-five oh two. Exactly what it will be. It just doesn't show it there. We'll leave the, all the rest of the funds the same. Take, take the bet.
Any further discussion, comments? Has the motion been approved? New rates for current funding approved? How many's motion approved, there's seconds? Chris seconds? All four raise your hand? Can you again, same time? Motion passes. Do we have anything on item five?
I ask America to ask for a motion to the title. I would give five.
George makes a motion to postpone discussion on item number five, there's a second? Billy seconds motion? All four raise your hand? All again, same time? Motion passes. At this time, we're going to do this special meeting until seven o'clock, party town hall meeting. George makes a motion during this special meeting, is there a second? Sorry. Still a second. All again, same time?
Oh, oh, no, you have something.
For your, for seven o'clock.
We're here.
I know.
Man, I'm sorry.
I got it bad.
Fifty dollars from the kid.
I'm sorry.
Tell my kids.
You know, I'm talking about my child. They should be back now. They're going to be young, they're going to be good. So, but why you're so kind? It's because of the diet you have on, right? But I don't think it's because of that. It's because of that, like. They all, they're being very kind.
That was. So.
Around at seven o'clock, everybody started, can everybody hear me all right? About now, everybody hear me? Okay. Uh, raise your hand, thank you. Uh, on behalf of this entire city council and employees of the city of Ashtrum, I would like to thank you for attending this town hall meeting. Although we would prefer it to be under different circumstances, we greatly appreciate your presence and your concerns. Before we start, I have asked earlier Eric Langford to lead us in a word of prayer.
We bow pray. Father, thank you for today, and thank you for your promise to be with us at all times. We ask for your guidance in this meeting, and we ask that you show us the way of wisdom. Your word tells us that wisdom is crying out to us in this street, and so today, I pray to you that we would take the time to listen for our voice. Thank you for this community and the concern they show for what happens here. Thank you for our leaders and their desire to make Ashtrum a better place. Teach us to encourage them and let them know how much they are appreciated. But Father, most importantly, may we always look to you as we search out how to move forward, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. Tonight, we are going to present latest information on our water supply and steps the city council has taken and prepared to take to safeguard our precious supply. The city council has placed a city in stage two for our two thousand and five water reservation plan. During the discussion of this act, I quoted Henry Kissinger when he said that "the absence of alternatives clears the mind marvelously." We indeed find ourselves in a situation where there are few alternatives. As far reaching and historic droughts, which is everyone in some manner, in a time of increased regulations, it has placed the city of Ashtrum in an unprecedented position. I hope this deal to all for their support and consideration in this matter. Tonight, we will hear from David Hewer, Mr. Hewer is administrator of North Central Texas municipal water authority, the governing body responsible for Miller Creek. Afterwards, Sunny Campbell, city administrator, will comment on how the drought affects the city and details of stage two water restrictions. We will then entertain any questions you may have concerning the problems with us here tonight. In order to move swiftly and constructively, we ask those who question, we ask that those with questions wait until the question, question and answer period. Thank you.
At this point, I'm going to do just a couple of general remarks. That is, uh, water authority, some of you that don't know, and probably most of you don't know, I did really before I started working there. How the water authority was organized, the cities of Gorey, Haslam, Knox City and Monday went together and sold bonds to create the lake, build the water treatment plant and all the infrastructure, the pipes and all, gets water to all the cities to buy water from us. Who we sell water to? The four member cities, Gorey, Haslam, Knox City, Monday. We also sell water to Ashtrum, Benjamin, Auburn, Pine Creek Water Supply Corporation, Diamond Water Supply Corporation, the city of Rattler and the city of Rupert. So basically, we sell drinking water to everybody in Knox, Haslam, Stonewall, Kansas. As Mayor, uh, touched on when he talked there, we have very specific rules from the state, it's easy to go up what we can and can't do. Every step, we have rules about how much water we can take out of the lake, how we have to treat it, how we have to pump it, how we have to treat it when it gets to a certain point in our system. And what we have to do when the lake level drops to a certain point, which we are at right now. At nine thousand acre feet of storage capacity, we reach stage of drought prevention plan. Each one of the cities and water supply corporations that buy water from us are also required to have their own drought prevention plan. At stage one, which happened several months ago, I wrote a letter to your city council in sunny and say, hey, you need to use less water, specifically ten percent less. At stage two, which we just reached, and I sent a letter to Sunny last week, I think, or part of last week, the week before that, it all kind of runs together at this point, say, at this point, it's no longer you need to use what, less water, it's you will use less water, specifically fifteen percent less. Not you need to, not wish you would, but you will, because that is how our drought prevention plan is written, and that's what we have to administer. It is administered exactly the same to everyone we sell water to, there is a law against, there is a law, member city, non-member city, water supply corporation, city, every single person that buys water from us comes exactly the same letter he got. If you look at the heading that he says, every city administrator, here is what we need to do right now. We are not real far away from the point at which the water authority is going to adopt stage three of our plan. At stage three is a mandatory twenty-five percent reduction in the water we sell you. Period. So, what they are doing to allow this is based on what I tell them they have to do, not I as the water authority, I as the agency for water authority. And when we get to the next level, we will send a letter and say, you will use less water than you're using today. That is probably about, depending on what it does, if we have a big fire or stuff like that, that's probably about somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five to sixty, eighty-eight. So, my main purpose here tonight is just to tell you that what they're doing as far as telling you we need to use less water, it's not them actually sending a letter, it's because of what I put in that letter. And what I put in that letter is based on state law. And I want to, that's about all I'm going to say right now, because I assume there will be questions, and I can talk for two hours, and I'm still going to answer all your questions, rather than do that, I'll quit now. When you get to the, when you get to the point where something is through, any questions you have, I will attempt to answer, if I don't know, maybe come back.
I see lots of new faces, and I know y'all see a little up here, so, uh, I'd like to say, I'd like to welcome all you ladies and gentlemen to our meeting. I am Sunny Campbell, uh, I'm the city administrator, uh, I hope I'm not the cause of all of this. But, uh, with the mayor's permission, I'm going to read y'all something here. Uh, this, this kind of took me a little bit, uh, and I hope y'all don't take this wrong, but I think it's something that needs to be said. Uh, I want to say first that I only represent the city of Ashtrum and their legal obligations, nothing more. My job is to guide the ship where the council tells me to steer. With that said, it's also my job to inform the council of rules, regulations and laws. We, the city, have to follow all of these, and thus, I give the council information needed to make their decisions. You, the residents of the city of Ashtrum, elected these individuals to represent you in all of these things. If any one of you were sitting in any one of their places tonight, you yourself would have to make the same decisions that have been made when it comes to the rules, the regulations and the laws presented. You also would have to understand that, yes, Stonewall County is for the most part and most of the time, a very close knit community, but the city council has to make decisions for the city of Ashtrum residents. Be your representatives and make you their first and only priority. Uh, now I'm going to take off where David left off, because, uh, there's a lot of miscommunication in what we're having to do. Uh, there's going to be some numbers, and I'd be happy to probably do these numbers in the office at any time. Uh, these numbers come from me, they come from David, and they come from past records, that's all we have to work with. Uh, as I tell you, these numbers, please believe, I have run them, run them again, run them in the computer, run them through Tammy, run them through the computer, and I come up with the same answer every time. Uh, Ashtrum gets water from water wells in Rupert. Uh, the water is good water, except for the fact it's high in nitrates. The nitrates are too high for us to consume the water as a whole without taking extra steps. Those steps are to purchase water from Miller Creek. Miller Creek's water has very low or no nitrates in it whatsoever. So Kenny Smart, Lorenzo and Mingo and myself, we look at this every day to see where we can be on our mix rates. How much water can we pump out of the wells? How much water can we buy from Miller Creek? As of today, as of stage two, we can only purchase from them up to eighty thousand gallons a day, period, that's it. Which puts a start limit of two point five five million gallons a day. If you do the mix rate of what we're doing as of today, at about thirty percent, that means we can mix with that well water of two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and sixteen thousand gallons for a total of three hundred thousand gallons a day. That's not telling you that our wells are running dry. I don't know if our wells are running dry. We have had, we have good information today that we just added to our system, uh, another well, we'll get a hundred and forty-eight, around a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-eight. well, and we'll get a hundred and forty-eight, around a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-eight gallons per minute. If you take three hundred thousand gallons a day and divide that by fourteen forty, you get a hundred and forty-eight gallons per minute that we have to have to match what we have to mix with Miller Creek. If we do not mix the water with Miller Creek and we pump it to Ashtrum, then we are violating the rules and regulations that are set upon us by the Texas Commission on Environmental Standards. If we violate those rules, it costs us, the city, to pay the fines, penalties, plus take a chance on us as operators losing our license because we know better. If you do, take all of those numbers and do math. As I said, Stonewall County is a close-knit community most of the time. Sometimes it's even closer, sometimes it's different. But if all we can produce daily is three hundred thousand gallons, and believe it or not, we have eight hundred and fifty connections in our system. If you divide that out, you get nine thousand gallons of water. If that answers your question of where we come up with the nine thousand gallons of water, that's where we come up with it. Numbers, most of the time, don't lie. But with those numbers in your head, I want y'all to think of this. We set numbers for certain businesses, we set certain numbers for youth residents, and we set the numbers according to the new permit and the new ordinance. But you need to understand that nowhere have I mentioned once the hospital, the nursing home, or Ashtrum High School. Why? It's hard to come up with those numbers, and it's up to you, the residents of Ashtrum, and the outlying areas that purchase water from Ashtrum, to cut your consumption. So the fifteen percent that I have put back for ours, for health stuff, goes to the nursing home, to the hospital, and to the Ashtrum High School. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, open for any questions. If you need to use an microphone, we have them provided here. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. You might want to come to the...
I don't think anybody will have a hard time hearing anything. I've talked for twenty-nine years while I was in this school district here in Ashtrum, so I figure you could hear my voice. My question regards, we get water on Thursdays and Sundays on the side of the highway that I live on. Hey, I don't understand if that means if I can put a sprinkler in my yard, or whether I have to do it by hand and hold a hose the entire time. That is my question.
I know nobody will have a hard time hearing me. The reason, according to the rules and regulations that we don't set, these are rules that every city follows, not just Ashtrum, it stretches from Austin to...
I don't really care about, I just want to know whether I can run a sprinkler.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so if I've got four hours of water, I can only run one hose at a time?
Yes, ma'am. And the reason for it is, is because a post-connected sprinkler system is not regulated, and you cannot put a certain amount of water on your grass by that, and if you would have a tendency to overwater, which is wasted. So a positive shut-off connection on garden hose, when it comes to the rules, is the only thing other than a permanently installed sprinkler system. That's just the rules.
Okay, but the trouble is, is I have the yard full of trees that don't want to die, and I'm going to visit once, I tried the other day. I can't give them all water as much as they need if that's four hours. I was still up at midnight running a hose.
Can I be mean for a second?
Okay, you can be mean, but like I said, I'm concerned about my...
I believe this lady's son, is it your son? I believe her key is way more important than your grass and trees.
Amen. But I still don't know how much water I really use in a time...
Uh, just give a second.
Okay, I know it says on the bill, but there's no way in the world, the bill comes out every month to an exact number with three zeros on the end. Are you rounding the number off, or what?
Oh, Son of Walker came into my office this morning, and he watered his grass. Does everybody know about Walker? Y'all seen his yard? Just to raise one hand, he mentioned how much water you think he used last night to water his grass. He used four hundred and thirty gallons, that's all he used. He watered his trees, and he watered his yard with a positive connection. And he'd come to my office and still wanted to know what he was doing around there. It's those things.
Explain what kind of connection?
Positive connection, it's a dude who squeezes, and then when you let off of it, it shuts off. I can't tell you without looking at your meter and reading your meter how much water you used. The problem with the old-style meters is they roll at one thousand, and unless you know how to read the meter, you'll never figure that amount out in gallons. The new meters read all the way to the gallon, and you can easily lift your lid, make sure you don't pinch the new wire, open the lid of the meter and read it. When you're done watering, read it again, and you'll be able to know exactly how much you used. Two, two fifths of a gallon. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next question.
Yeah, I have one. You said that the start of another well, the, and already was it already a well, it was powered with the help of your buddy on there?
No, sir. Actually, in, uh...
It was built at big times.
In several, it's existing well, well number one. And we had him to fail it, and it's got some issues, but they put a test pump in it, and it holds true, and everything works right, we're going to get him to breathe water.
I have a question, man. I want to walk over one, have a quick inform of this.
Y'all have. I've been in contact with Stanley and Donnie. Donnie, I've been in constant contact with them for this. Y'all are actually paying for it, so we didn't y'all. Check the way we went through.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
People that get water out of water tower, what does the news affect them?
At this current stage, it does not affect them. As we progress, increasing the stage levels, it will affect them.
How would you know how much, what our person gets?
We've kind of addressed some of these issues. Did everybody hear the question?
No.
The question is about the field, it's filed up here at the water tower. There are several families in the county that get that water strictly for their household use, that's what they get it for. Ethically, I can't turn that off from them, but what we're going to do is, we're going to have to encourage people not to use so much. And so I believe, Monday in Seymour, the price for a thousand gallons at the loading rack for treated water is thirty dollars a thousand. If they can afford that thirty dollars a thousand, if that's the point where we get to, then, of course, I'll settle to.
What do you think?
It's ten dollars, between eight and ten, a thousand right now. The people need the water just like they, everybody else needs it for livestock and such. And in our stage two, livestock is not the issue at this time. But in stage three and in stage four, the livestock issues will be addressed, and it will get to the point where we can't do that, that human consumption is more important than livestock consumption. But we're not at that stage right now, so we're not, we don't need to go there, it's just, that'd be another town meeting.
One caveat to what he said about Seymour. Yeah, you can buy treated water for thirty dollars a thousand, but you have to be able to produce a picture ID to prove you live in the area where you use it strictly for household use, or you don't buy it, period. So yeah, you can buy it, but not just anybody, but they have gone far enough. They have one area where there is no groundwater, there is no city water, and if you can prove you live there, you can buy it, but they actually check ID before you do it. I'm sorry, sorry, that's...
What happens if the light shuts off? What's the next step?
Okay. What, what we intend to do from here on, the next step is, all of the member cities at one time were obviously on well. They all still have access to those wells, they're obviously not using them all the time. We have, I have last month, sent everyone them a letter, along with... Do I give you a copy of the emergency well water usage deal? There's a, there's a piece plate that you give to CQ that says, here's what you have to do, put your well back in service. I sent one, a copy of that to every member city last month, and said, get on this, because soon we're going to require you to do this. That will reduce how much water we have to pull out of the lake, which obviously makes it last really longer. Also, just south of the city of Monday, where our storage tanks are, the two huge white storage tanks, we have a well that the Water Authority has a well on that property. We have physical space enough to drill another well there, and we think we have physical space to drill a well at Knox City also. The next step for us will be to drill those two wells and put pumps in all three of those wells, and pump that in our system, which further reduces how much we have to pull out of the lake.
That's going to be a bit of a hassle.
If the late stage, if there's water delay, does that benefit you?
I'm worried about what's going to happen when y'all say, "Far, it's it."
Well, when we, when we say there is no more water delay, then we will tell everybody, sorry, there's no more water delay. We're going to get...
I want to know from our city, what can be done, even though Knox Creek Lake is high, you can't consume it, but we can still pump, we can still let bad, we can still do whatever.
The nitrate levels are high. When it hits to that point, yes, we'll be in violation for the nitrates being high, but it will not affect ninety percent of the population in the city. What it does to pregnant women, nursing mothers, and people with immune deficiencies. If you supply me the information that your wife is a nursing wife or a pregnant wife, twenty-four seven, seven days a week, I will give you a case of free water for her drink.
I ain't worried about all that, I'm worried about when we...
Free your water.
We don't have any water.
Well, as long as...
I want to know what the deal is with the wells over there, y'all have to drill the well. Why? And I want to know why, because there's two businesses in this town that does that. I don't know if there's nothing else. We can go over to you, y'all, so we can have a chat off the camp, and then get a call. Not for the business, but...
Oh, is this the well water, the well stuff?
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that have the well logs. Leonard had the well logs on these wells.
That's Leonard, yeah.
There's ones that originally...
There's two people in town that does that two businesses. Oh, that's good, I think your wells are, certainly are.
If it, you know, that's just the thing, because they have our, they have our logs in order to work on how our wells. That's not my decision, that's just where we had to be at CQ in February. They had our, our logs, and you see, we...
We have a little log down, I know, but we don't do it every day, but we do it tomorrow.
But you drilling a well for the public has nothing to do with drilling a well for the city. It's totally different.
We ain't going to...
No, ma'am.
This is the...
No, ma'am.
We have to have water.
Ma'am, I understand that, but we have to still follow the rules.
Well, they need to use the council, they need to change the rules.
I can't, that's the state...
So if it's up to the state and everything goes drought, and we decide to drill it all and move it to a town, the state won't have it all?
No, no, we just, first of all, the city does own the wells. Stonewall Water District owns the wells, we just, we have to be licensed to even pump the water, where you as individuals do not. We do. And there is rules, regulations, and laws that the city has to follow to the T, or we cannot pump out of the wells.
I understand, but just for a question, we're supposed to just drill it all and the town grow up because the wells went down?
As long as our wells hold up, we're in good shape. But nobody knows how much is in the wells.
Okay, that's a question I want to ask. How is the underground water?
Nobody really knows that, nobody knows that answer.
If it's underground, it will drown tomorrow or not?
Yes, ma'am.
How much have they dropped?
Well, we can do drop tests on it, and our wells are in pretty good shape, from where they're, what we're pulling out of per minute. It shows that we're in good shape, that still doesn't show us what the operator does. Nobody really knows that answer.
Sunny, could you discuss the options of treating the nitrate?
We can treat the nitrate at a pretty good cost, about a million dollars. You have to run it through a specific kind of filter, and of course, they can, any company can sell us those filters at about a million dollars to set that up.
For a well, or for all?
No, that would be for all of us, of what we can treat per day offered out.
Well, would that cost, would it be cost effective to get in or apply a water dealer?
A hundred or a hundred and fifty?
A million dollars is, for having a gallon of water?
About three hundred thousand a day. It's about, that's still going to be max, about what, whether it's drink.
But I'm talking about the life of the filter.
Oh, that, no, that's just how much it costs to get started. The maintenance of that filter will cost ongoing.
But what is the life of one filter?
Uh, if, if... If you use the filter the way it's supposed to, the life of the filter would probably be about eight to ten months before you'd have to do really anything to it. But things are a little different than an RO. It's not an RO, and it's none of that, it's not that kind of a filter system, it's kind of a mixture of some different kinds of materials in order to run the water through it, and it's pressurized through a media which takes out the nitrate, which is the only way to take it out.
Reverse osmosis?
Yeah. Reverse osmosis is, is one million dollars per thousand gallons of water you want to produce, or an RO per pump.
Where's that cost coming from?
Engineering.
It's a lot right here, too.
It has to be a certain type.
But you put that RO system on, on your own house?
It wouldn't cost you that much, because it's not the same kind of...
But would it take the nitrate out?
Uh, yeah, it'll take some of the nitrates out, but it's still not the same process for nitrates. It's more suspended solids and TSS, and then take out other kinds of dirt, not...
Would it be more cost effective to buy the filters and be then going, or buy another year for the water every year?
Well, the water, for really is a question. This man, Mayor, can tell you that, you know, we're paying two dollars per thousand for the water from them, and there's no way we can treat that for the same cost. At this time, we couldn't do that.
This nine thousand gallons is per household?
Yes, sir, per meter connection.
What if you're watering livestock? Where does that nine thousand gallons go, I mean?
If you're watering, if you have a meter connection, that's all you get is nine thousand. That's all that you get before there's a price increase or a decline. A lot of your...
Dan?
You, so let's assume that we lose Miller Creek, just, you know, would the city pump well water, knowing that they would be in violation of state law?
Yes, sir, I would. With the understanding that I would provide to you no cost for those of you that can say that you're pregnant or, from you see that, you're a nursing mother, or if you have some kind of immune deficiency, all it takes is a slip of paper, your doctor will sign that, and you get a bottle of water free charge from the city.
Are you don't, are you don't cut the Oldfield companies off and buy them water?
Uh, the Oldfield companies cut themselves off. They, Lums and Dove actually turned their meter off and welded the top.
How about Dove?
Lums and Dove has turned theirs off, and they haven't bought any yet this month from their loading racks that are out here.
Well, how about Dove?
Dove hasn't purchased any from out there, their box is welded out there. They're still, they're allowed to get thirties... Now, I, I've been assured about them, and the only way they're gonna use their lot of amount here is if they have to. They're, they're in for us, they're, they're not trying to do these things over...
But you're gonna go up that this boy's life is more important than life cost?
When it comes down, when it comes down to the point where we got to shut people off, then Oldfield will be shut. At this point, we're not. We don't get to keep, need to go at this time, any further than where we are. We're at stage two, that's where we are. Now, so maybe it's stage three, and that's a whole nother set of rules for everybody. Not just for one person, there's a next. Stage three, the rules change. Stage four, the rules change again. And on and on and on, they keep changing at each stage. In reality, when he put us into stage two, we should be in stage three now. The reason we're not in stage three is because we passed a ordinance that allows us to allocate the water to nine thousand. So when we go to stage three, it will be another cut. We're not at that point yet, so...
Mr. Martin?
You said that we got nine thousand gallons allocation for Red. Thirty thousand for a business. What's the definition of a business? A business? Now, let me finish, please. These ranches out here, we're out front a lot here, it's a decent town. Offering, we're not using any more city water now. But we're as much a business as anybody here in town. We don't pay city taxes. And something else that the city council is probably not very popular here either, for them, if they even knew it. When that water line was laid, a lot of these landowners gave a floodaway on the condition that they would never be charged or have any different rules on other meters than what the town of Astorland has. I've been to the courthouse, I talked to, I'm, I, I wasn't here to argue, but I talked to a lot of people that originally did it. And I may be the only one in here that has. But the only people on that line that gets any kind of break as far as I can find, searching the records at the courthouse, is I've been there. Is that right, brother?
That's correct.
They, they made a deal dated the thirtieth day of March nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-one. Roger Parker over here, I think was the mayor at the time. And it stipulates in that deal that... And I don't know exactly what it was all about.
If you wanna come to my office in the morning, I will go into detail with you, why. But at this time, I couldn't.
That's the answer, the law would get that before that.
But that was all B S, that before me. I'll give you the right answer, but I can't share those answers right now with you, but I'll be happy to.
Why are we gonna keep a secret from Polly and others?
Uh, they're just, right now's not the time to discuss some of those issues.
Well, let me ask you something else, while I'm here. We're talking about the flea, we're talking about her yard, whatnot, water, trees, are we watering that football field?
Uh, I believe they're watering on their days to water.
Seems like to be a lot better to save that water than the eight or nine games they play up there on that football field.
They could, in fact, I had a meeting with the city council, and they're, they're gonna do their best to not even water. I believe Roy turned the water meter off to the football field yesterday morning.
Got a couple of questions related to St. Mary. One, you're saying nine thousand gallons per meter.
Per residential meter.
Sir?
Per residential meter.
Okay, residential being town, that'd be the same definition as having a rural area?
It depends on the, uh...
Uh, what, what we mean depends?
Nine thousand, yes, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, do you hear, sir?
Nine thousand.
That's for city and rural, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the second part of, I'm sorry, I have three questions. What is that fee for that nine per thousand?
I'm sorry?
What is that fee per, per thousand for those nine thousand gallons? And if I understand, there's a penalty for that, right?
I don't...
Uh, you have, in the city or out of the, out of the city, sir? I don't regulate your prices, so I don't know. That question, to answer the question for the residential, no, their price has to change a bit. If the price is still the same, we're just allocating the amount of water. Uh, what we've changed in our billing system is, we no longer count the outside town meters in the charge. We charge them for a bulk rate next year.
Third question. What's wrong here? I understand that there's, from a mechanical standpoint, there's many, four, five, six different lines going in different directions.
Yes, sir.
Is that reasonable, soon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand on some of those lines, if you may, give an example, only have five customers on there.
Yes, sir.
You're only gonna be allotted nine thousand gallons.
Per meter.
Per meter. If you got another line that's got twelve meters on that line, you're only gonna get nine thousand?
Per meter.
Could you explain to me the basis of that kind of decision?
Uh, well, if you've got, if you've got four meters on the line, each of those meters gets nine thousand gallons.
You're missing my point, so you're avoiding. You got five people...
I really can't hear you.
I'll make a point, okay? You got five people in one of those systems, and you're allowing them nine thousand gallons per meter.
Yes, sir.
In another rural area, you've got twelve meters on it.
Yes, sir.
You're on that thing, you have nine, and only the people's got nine over here, or the ones got four people? I don't understand your theory of thoughts.
We have, we have seven, several different things. Uh, I'll make Swinson, Tri-Tri, Plainview, Southeast, Southwest, Plainview, Sweet Home, and Oakmont, Southside, Southside. Okay. Each one of them, for the past five years, except for Swinson, has a meter count number they give us every month. We have to keep up with two numbers, the serviceable meters and the total meters. The average they gave us over the past five years, we take that number, multiply it times nine thousand, that is the total amount of water that system gets before they have the same penalty as everybody else. So it's the same amount of water, each connection gets the same amount of water.
What's the penalty gonna be?
It's, it's gonna be done in my office. I'm not gonna let a computer tell me to the point, if you call to tell me, "My grandson flushed something in the toilet, or flipped a bowl, and the hill got tossed, and I didn't catch it for a leak, and I'm sorry." You know, you're fined maybe twenty bucks, depending on how much you used though. But if you blatantly went against the ordinance, I can fine you up to five hundred dollars. Plus, ten dollars per thousand over every thousand if you ran over to nine thousand gallons. That's a blatant charge, and all that does is, maybe it is making an example, but sometimes that's what you have to do. That's not our plan, our plan is not to fine anybody. But we have to have the teeth in order to do something. And that's what the ordinance, that we, the county, the council established does. It gives us that teeth if we have to go. According to our drought contingency plan, that's what it is. The coun, the council this time is not going there, it probably may go there at stage three, but not now. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. With our ordinance, we're able to apply it to your water bill instead of having to sue us. It is a, an overage charge.
I know one place on this here, so I just wanna know, there's a lady out there, this little one, that has magic meters, opening the beach, all those houses going out on, pick up how they... I have heard that she's only allotted nine thousand gallons, because she cannot resell that water. But for who? What are you gonna do about that? I mean, is that the same thing as saying each house on that line gets nine thousand gallons?
Each, each meter. No, each meter on that line would be, uh, limit to be nine thousand, each meter.
That's good, well, this, I've been hearing from ladies here.
We have heard some praise, and we're also... That's, that's the next main point of this, this town, all these, and I thank you for that, for bringing that up. Any other questions, any more questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm actually, which is more, if I, if I'm wanting to go, and, uh, where do you like the other, all, all areas? We have, if we have one lane, one lane, what scenario is that gonna be on my end? I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I'll do, I have to do the same thing to y'all, just as this man does to me, and that's all that I can do. Leaks happen, but according to the, the rules that is, you know, if it takes more manpower now to drive your line, so be it. We, we're doing, uh, we have a lot of little small leaks, a lot of small leaks add up to bigger numbers. And so it's up to the corporations to, more manpower, or longer hours driving their line to make sure, to try to, to stop those leaks as, as fast as possible. Uh, the state is actually, uh, trying to get you to put some kind of alarm system when the pressure drops that it calls you out. So it's those kind of things that we have to do. If you do have a leak, we just have to work it out. Because it does happen, and I know it.
I know, I might, I might, about the highway, off the, off the ground, but I want... You know, you know, we're certainly, that's, you know...
Yes, sir. No, we'll just have, each incident will be dealt with on a one-on-one basis, not, not as a mass deal. Which I think is more fair that way, because not all of y'all are gonna have exactly the same excuse, so...
Yes, sir.
One quick. Do you only understand why wells are given more water than cattle?
Most, uh, it's based on historical reasons, thank you. I don't know how many cows you got, I don't know how many cows anybody in this room has. But you can sell cows, you can't sell children. I don't wanna sell my wife, most of the time. The thing, the thing is, is we did, we did some research through T C Q, and we did all these numbers. Uh, you wouldn't believe how many numbers we've taken. About how much a cow drinks a day, how much does a bull drink a day, how much does a nurse and calf drink, cow drink, how much calf drinks. Every number I come up with, you'll argue with me about that. I guarantee you, you will, because we had that happen in a meeting up at the city hall. And, and I'm not saying you're right, and I'm not saying that I'm right, nor am I saying I'm wrong. That's the only number I have, so to make it fair. Drinking water is for human consumption, so no account in our system is set up for business other than the existing business accounts. A business account pays more for their water than a resident account does. They pay more for everything. So if you're not a business, an existing business, you're not gonna be able at this time to become a business, because then it throws all humans off. So that's why cattle, people that own the cattle, and water and lots, and this and that, why set nine thousand? To go further with that, I'll explain to you why. Uh, Tri-Tri, whoever's with Tri-Tri. When that line was laid, it was laid by the U S D S office for cattle watering only. That goes in a whole nother league ball field of consumption. Okay? If you read the drought contingency plan, you'll know what can happen to that line. Morally and ethically, that line has became a residential service line more than it is a livestock feeding line. So therefore, it's no longer livestock, it's all human consumption. That's what we have to do with all the lines. So that's why everybody gets the same amount of water. Like the question with the line coming in from Rural, they're all set at nine thousand, too. Everybody will be set at that particular amount. That's the only fair thing to do.
Yes, sir.
I think, I think what they're trying to get at there is they have two businesses here in town that sell water through the oil pit. Why are we in competition?
Who do you sell the water with?
Well, you got one right out here on, uh, three eighth. There, it, it's owned by Lenny and Jacob, I think. Uh, you've got, uh, Moe's, thanks, down here.
Okay.
It's owned by John and I, and them. They're in the business to sell the water to the oil field. Why are we in competition with them at this point of being in a restricted watering?
I'm, I'm not in competition with them. Uh, I, they're only allotted thirty thousand, just like the flower shop, just like the...
They're just getting there every day, a few more months.
That was, that was before...
Y'all hadn't known that this was coming, along town, Bill. And they've been hauling water out of there for a bad year, it's passed to some...
And we know that, too.
Wow!
We know, we know.
And then it's coming, why are you keeping selling to them? I gotta live, man, we got great water, why are you...
I think that's what the question is, is they have another option?
At the time, before the ordinance was passed, there was nothing I could do about it. Uh, we asked them to slow down, and they did. They went from three million gallons a month down to one point two, that's a pretty good drop. They went from one point two down to four hundred thousand.
That's look how much water they have, it would've been, not now, if it, if it's a clean. 'Cause they went resold and made them one, and that's fine, that's business.
Well, but, as the city, we're also in business to sell water.
At this time, uh, our lawyer is here today, so I can't be not be able to help us with some of the advances. What, what specifically would you like me to, to address? What is the reason you can't knock it off?
Well, you can't, if you have paid customers on the, on the line, or on the, on the system, they're paying if they're not in violation, you know, you cut off people's water, you cut off customers' water, they don't pay their bill, or they violate their, their agreement in, in some way, shape, form, or fashion. If they're paying their bill and operating within the bounds of their, of their water utility agreement, you can't just simply cut them off. The ones who are selling water, uh, as Sunny addressed, they're, they're thirty, if they're using more than thirty, they're subject to that thirty thousand gallon limit. If they wanna go, if they wanna spend all that thirty thousand gallons selling that to a third party, that's a prerogative, but they're still subject to the same thirty thousand gallon limit. If they go sell a hundred thousand gallons and play violation, they're gonna get fined by the city. You can't shut them off and say, "Sorry, you're selling water, we don't like your business," because then that becomes, the city's picking and choosing which businesses are more, or, uh, you gotta treat all your businesses that are all under the same ru, that are all, um, buying water under the same rules, you have to treat them the same. Otherwise, the city gets sued for basically, essentially violating the United States Constitution, constitutional law, for basically treating, discriminating one versus the other when they're similarly situated businesses. And that's not a situation the city wants to get into, so you have to put rules that the city deems are fair across the board, and try to, and enforce those rules to every similarly, similarly situated business.
Goodbye, business.
As, as Sunny said, it's anybody on a, on a business with a business account with the city. Uh, I'm, I'm in Stanford, my, I have a business account at the city, and I have, at my office, and I have a home water account at, um, at my house. I pay substantially more for, for water, for trash, for everything else, uh, with, at my business account. That's part of the, that's part of the joy of having a business account.
She's still having a bad dude, she just said, "What's your, the charging?"
A, a business account is somebody who comes in and requests a, requests an account as a business. Uh, I don't, I can't speak specifically for how the... Uh, I don't, I can't speak specifically for how the, for how the city of Aspremont delineates if someone comes in and says, I wanna do account, are you residential, are you business, that would be at Sunny. But it's a, a business, a business account is one type of account, a residential account is one type of account. Uh, I would assume as far as livestock goes.
She's still having a big time. I don't, I really do. How did I charge, speak up?
Well, what we came up with this, the reason why, it's twenty dollars to a five hundred dollar deal. The reason why we come up with that is, at the max, I can fine you five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's only a penny on the bill?
No, ma'am, it depends on how much water you, and it depends on whether or not, one of these gentlemen right here sitting on my right, or any individual sitting at this table, sees you watering when you're not supposed to. Uh, that can go into that scenario, because I have pieces of paper on my desk that tells me when you're caught. Uh, you may not know it, but I'll have records, and it will be, somebody will already have seconded it or they'll have witnessed it with that person that turned in that violation on you. And, at the end of the month, you've used thirty thousand gallons, you're allotted nine, you need to probably break your check, because that would tell me that you blatantly went against our city ordinance.
Well, do you think that a family of five is gonna use the same or a family of two?
Ma'am, this is.
You know, doesn't, or meter, or not, how many's in that house?
As, as everything is set for Aspremont, it doesn't really have anything to do with Aspremont. It has something to do with the statewide survey of everybody. And y'all are complaining because we said it nine thousand, ma'am, do you understand that we should be at four?
Well, I call Knox City, I call Monday, and I call Wyner, they were not using it, and that Wyner is truly well watered. And that means the nursery director, Aunt Corinne.
I have spoken to all of the cities that purchase water from Miller Creek, and all of the cities are gonna be in exactly the same place we are. The, the, the reason why it's affecting Aspremont differently at this period of time is that our community consumes twice the amount of water as Monday or Knox City together. That's why it's a little tougher on most people for that nine thousand gallons, because in the past, the limit has been averaging twenty-five to fifty thousand gallons a month. It comes in as bills, we see that, so it is a drastic cut. The first one was gonna be fifteen thousand per meter. When you multiply fifteen thousand times eight hundred and fifty, you get the wrong numbers, and I can't do that. I can do the nine thousand right now today until he cuts me back another fifteen percent. Then I no longer can do that nine thousand, and we have to adjust it once again. We're trying to make this as easy a transition as we can and fair, because if you look on the internet, and you can go to TCQ, you can go to Texas Water Commission, you can go to Texas Water Utilities, any of the websites, and do a search for water consumption. The water consumption for each adult person is fifty-eight gallons per day. Anywhere from fifty-eight gallons a day to ninety-two gallons a day. Now reduce that by twenty-five percent, there's where you need to be. Multiply that times thirty, and that's the amount of water you need to use in that month. But don't multiply it by how many people is in your household, you can't do that. The, the numbers we have to use under the state rules is a number divided by the residents, and the number divided by an hour community, it's two point two. So you multiply that average usage for one person times two point two, and that's where the, the number should be.
And I don't think anybody's gonna be happy with the deal that you're gonna be wanting, with that five.
Who else, who else, who else should know? The reason why it's, it's really an easy way to do that is because I have no clue who you are. No, I don't know anybody. So, I'm gonna be as fair across the board as I possibly can, because I know Buddy, but not right here. You see what I'm saying? All I know is you, all I know you buy is account number, period. And houses reported me as administrator, and that's my job to do this.
And, and let me just say that Sunny and I have visited with this about a length, and I'm the one that drafted the ordinance, I'm the one that put that in there, and that's put in there with the understanding, with the oversight of the city council, and that the fines are gonna be based on evidence. Uh, Sunny's not going to look and see somebody use a bunch of water and say, oh, I think I'll fine them five hundred dollars today. He's not gonna do that, and as the city's attorney, I'm not going to allow that. The, I would say that the goal would be to use the min- to use the minimal fine as much as possible for accident, for the accidents and the things that happen, overruns that were unforeseen. The five hundred dollars and, and that sort of fine is for the most egregious violators that are essentially snubbing their nose at the city, at every other citizen within the county, and saying, we don't care what the rules are, we're gonna break them, we dare you to fine us. That is the only reason that a large fine of that magnitude would be, would be applied.
Well, I'd like, you have a piece of property, you've got seven meters on it, as the ranch has. Got cattle pulled out of one side, that meter shut, I mean, that tank shut, there's no cattle in there, so therefore, there's no usage. But, the middle section, do we get the nine thousand there, plus the nine thousand we could have down there? Because that's where all the cattle are right now. Is it gonna work on the meter system, or is it gonna work over the whole ranch?
What system are you on?
Out of Abernathy?
So, the main line.
A lot of us are on the main line, and we're not on a system. We're on the main line, but we're not getting a, so.
Are you towards, towards Rural?
Yes.
Okay, you're nine thousand too. Every meter we have in our system is at nine thousand at this time. If you, in Abernathy, if you had, uh, one meter tied on that, that's, and you had that meter active, you'd get nine thousand. If the meter was not active, when we establish this, it's not active. I can't count it, because I just can't.
No, the meters are active, wha- what I'm saying is, we moved the cattle, or they did, the leases, moved their cattle out to a different pasture, this is sitting there, we're paying the, the.
They're getting nine thousand gallons of water used.
What he's saying, he's got, I think what he's saying is if he's got multiple meters, but only, he's only actively, but he, he's got multiple meters that are active, but he's only using water out of one of those meters.
I, I can't, I can't let you do that, because that's not fair to everybody else.
Well, if you don't use the water, it's not, I can't let me.
So, but if I let you do that, then I can let Buddy, he doesn't use the thousand gallons a month, and he can run garden hose down to somebody else's house and let them use his water to water his grass. That would be the same kind of scenario. It has to be per meter, it has to be per account number. If, if you're, if the account's under the same number, and that's how it works, then, and you've got three meters under the same account number, then yes, you'll get eight two thousand. Otherwise, you get nine per meter.
Yes, sir, like you up here, these stories, my meter now has a black something-on it. Can I open that meter, or is it locked, do I get fined if I open it, or?
You'll get fined if I open the meter.
No.
Okay, well, I've just heard that they have locks, if we open them, we get fined.
No.
That's, that's misinformation, you know, that's.
I'll try to straighten this. Only a certain twenty people out of all of Aspremont ended up with locking lids, pause, those were brand new lids. Most lids are supposed to have a lock on them, okay? If you have a new, new meter in your yard, it will have a black deal on the top of it. If you wanna read your meter, carefully open that lid, do not pinch the wire that's connected. You'll have about this much room, open it up, open your meter and read it, then place it back on there at the time. That, reading your meter was not the issue, using our livestock as an off and on to turn your house off was the fault. And there's a misconception in that, you still read your meters.
I have a leak in my house until nine.
You're supposed to have a cutoff on your side of the meter.
You've never informed me of that, I, I shouldn't do that.
Well, I am now.
Okay, that's fine, I just.
And that's my, I'm going to that, if you have a leak at your house, by all means, turn your water off at that meter. But if you break it, I have to charge you fixed. That's what I don't want to do.
That's why I'm asking you, because I'm, I'm gonna break it if I got a little bit of a leak in it.
Well, I'm gonna call your building after I come here, I'll water them.
Do you know my number?
Oh, well, I find it out, I, I have to know this person so well, pal.
How are all the businesses, all the same, or are they different? gallons, gallons per month of businesses, why is it, are they all the same?
Thirty thousand gallons a business.
For every business, for a business meter.
I heard that the city council, where they were getting their water furnished, or part of their meals furnished, has honored us, and I expect them there, and paying their full water bills now, I'd like to say thank you.
Uh, there's, there's, and, there's a question about this thirty thousand, and I, I want to clear that. John Dane's got the car wash, uh, the owner of, uh, the Backdoor Inn, or Budget Inn, the owner of Hickman's Cafe, uh, Hickman's Hotel. If you do a consumption rate for not the hottest part of the month, but somewhere there before and somewhere thereafter, and you take twenty-five percent off of their normal usage in those months, you come up with thirty thousand. That's why it's set at thirty thousand, because we don't know how many people come and drive through Aspremont and stay at the hotel, and we really still want them to stay here because that's money. So what's definitely, is definitely a budget of, of a business, is anybody who had an account with the city of Aspremont as a business account, they get thirty thousand.
Does the school, the hospital, nursing home, they all thirty thousand also?
No, ma'am. The school, the nursing home, and the hospital are surviving off of what you do not use. That's how we have to do that.
I would be like, if we were to be shot going two thousand, we could put that next one.
Yeah, like eleven or something, that's where that gets up, that's what you're right there.
Roger. So, I'm gonna have to stay on your, did we, or did we not, cause it's kinda weird.
Uh, what it was, back a long time ago, somebody went on vacation, like it always happens, and then when that person got back on vacation, they decided not to do the normal job they did of packing a well with gravel, and so the well collapsed, it, it caved in to, to what they told us. Uh, I haven't been here long enough to know all the particulars, neither has anyone with Roy, and it happened before Roy. And Roy was told, do not approach that well, it's caved in. Well, I'm kinda like most people, I'm really curious, so I walked up to the well, uh, that's not the problem. So, it is an existing well that we have taken out of service because it was caved in. We're trying to redo that well, and it, they started yesterday, which will give us, if the well comes in, it will give us another hundred and forty-eight gallons a minute, which will help us tremendously, uh, even though it's in the same well, it'll, it's still gonna help. But we don't have to go through all of the, the rules and the, and the stuff that TCQ will make us do to drill a new well. To drill a new well will cost us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to drill a ninety-foot well. By the time they're through with all their bookkeeping, their logs, and the cement, and the gravel, and, this has to be right, this has to be this way, blah, blah, blah. This one's gonna cost us about fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars, or a hundred. I wish I could, if, if you will get TCQ approved, then we can do that. Uh, by, by all means, we can do that, I'm serious, it, it's all it takes is just you getting approved by TCQ. And then I can choose whoever I want to.
It will definitely be addressed. It will definitely be addressed.
Well, don't the city water, uh, fall under the Texas Aboriginal Water Act?
I'm, I'm sorry?
Don't the city water fall under the Texas Aboriginal Water Act?
Uh, there's, there's a new, there's a new thing, there's all kinds of stuff. Miller Creek has nothing to do with what you're talking about, neither do our wells, it has nothing to do. If this man right here owns a hundred and seventy-five acres and he drills a water well, that's his water, not yours. He can sell it to whoever he wants to. So, uh, Stonewall bought that land, therefore, that water belongs to, to Stonewall Water Dentry, who sells it to the city of Aspremont. We operate and take care of the maintenance and all, or that well too. Uh, the deal that you're talking about has, doesn't even apply to us anymore.
There's a way around it, I'm gonna tell you, because back, we did, on the air, now if you go to the shore, uh, we want to put the state, they're like, emergency situation, they have to have water. I know there's a lot of stuff to do on the state, the streets, all the BS that you gotta do. The state has engineers, they're all of them, and we need to do, one of those, and we named a well, and they're pumping it in a couple days, and they're all, and everybody's got water. Because, emergency situations are where, not trying to get around them.
And when, and when the city, when the city applies for emergency, then, then those changes, that changes the rules. Problem is, even as sad as it may sound, is we're not really at that emergency thing that TCQ wants us to be at. Not my call when they, when they go into that. Uh, I just spoke with them yesterday about the emergency situation, we have to apply for it. So, I applied for it yesterday, so we're already in that process. And, which will open up business for you, because they'll, they'll waive all these other things we have to do during that time.
What you're telling us, we have enough water without Miller Creek, if you get us these emergency rigs, is that what you're saying?
I'd love to tell you, yes, sir, we do, but I can't tell you that.
How come?
I can't see underground. I don't know what our offer fee is, you've got, uh, from the, from Seymour all the way to the other side of Rural, pulling out exactly the same offer fee as we do, we don't know where it's at. Uh, Miller Creek is going dry, it's because there hasn't been any rain, so can you imagine what the offer fee is going to dry as well? So, we just don't know, we just gotta hope that there is, just hope. A day?
A day.
Uh, to, about three hundred and four thousand, if they, if they don't pump off. So, we haven't gotten to a point where we've been trying to pump them off yet, so.
Is the, uh, the people who's working on the well, are the same ones that told us the well was not snowing before?
No, sir, it's different. Uh, same name, different person.
Who's working on the well?
Leonard Wells, over at, uh, Adley.
Are there any further questions, any more questions?
You can come in, if you have any questions. Uh, it's, it's, were there waters from eight o'clock and nine until twelve o'clock, okay? We have a lot of elderly people in this town, they can't water from eight o'clock and nine until twelve o'clock, and with that eight o'clock is dark, we got lots of crazy patients here to get water out here, and things like that. We got lots of nights, you may say, you have to get water around here, and it's like, well, that's probably not. Can we back that off at 9:00, so? So they can have a little daylight for the winter.
Do you have a question? Then we... Uh, right now, is that the word it's saying?
What's the difference, 9,000 and 9,000, what's the difference between putting on 6:00 or 8:00?
You'll get, you'll get more water, you'll get more bang for your buck. You have less evaporation at 8:00 than you do at 6:00. Half the water you put down at 6:00 will evaporate.
What, what happens if somebody does get out there and gets roused, and they get in the dark? How much are they gonna sue the city for? How much are they gonna...
What, what about if you just don't worry about grass?
I mean, that's just what you're saying, something to think about.
Thank you very much.
I don't think, and just put more, put up the grass, and worry about our kids, and our green kids.
I wouldn't invite anybody, anytime, to come over and look at my house. I have, I don't know how much I've spent on water, maintenance of my yard. I, I wouldn't invite anybody over there, anytime, to look at my yard, it's, it's over there.
Did you hear what I said? The final people saw what water out under grass was like. They're worried about the kids, and our green kids, and drinking water, watching the clouds, and watching the clouds. They're worried about their grass. It'll plant it when we get a, get a water supply. I mean, we're all...
What we're really doing, we're just begging. Only real cooperation. I've lived here for a number of years, and I told Sonny, you know, the precinct's Stonewall is bad, and it's very crowded and warm, and it's impossible for us to earn. We're no good, it doesn't matter how long we live. But I've also known that adversity only steals. You all are dogs, solve the problem. This is not the first time Ashramon has had water problems. First time in our lifetime, in 1950, when Lake Sullivan went to foot. Somebody had enough foresight to look down the road and around the corner, and that's the reason we got drinking water this morning. We don't have all the answers, this is a complex problem. It really is. We're not trying to take anything away from anybody. What we're really trying to do is ensure that you have something later on. Uh, my yard's burning. We, we don't have all the answers, we need everybody in here...
I appreciate that you're asking people to cut back. We have to, or we're not gonna have it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question about the smart meters. In the paper, we state that they are state mandated, the state are going to be state mandated. In fact, record, they are required. Will we have smart meters installed out of the city limits, on our meters, that live out in the country?
What, uh...
And are they state mandated, for people out of the city limits?
Now, there was supposed to have been presented this. Last year, President Obama signed a deal into federal law, under the Clean Water Drinking Act, that any connection that water goes through can only be to a certain percentage, or have a certain percentage of lead content, period. Which in turn makes what we use in our system obsolete right now. Okay, a new 100% frasque meter to install, the city's price was $350. We would have to have on stop on ourselves a percentage of our meter count to the floods. So, when it comes to that part of the law, we decided not, that's not the only reason why you're getting a smart meter. By any means, that is the last reason you're getting a smart. But it is to also get us into compliance by 2014. But, the smart meters, there's other reasons why the meters are there. And the, the reason why everybody's getting a new meter is because us as a city, we have to keep track of every drop of water that we use, that we produce, is consumed, or it's a loss. When you get to a certain percent of loss, you're in trouble. The city of Ashramon is at a horrible percent loss. We have lost every month, average of 1 million to 5 million, up until the last few months. The reason we have this is because we've found issues, we've found problems, and we've done this. The old-style meters are not accurate at all. They only read 1,000 gallons, and that's it. So, the city is giving you 999.999 gallons, potentially, every month. In my system, in our billing system, that shows up as a loss. So, in order to be business-wise, we needed to update our meters. Because I believe there's some meters we've changed out that were over 60 years old. They're not accurate, most of them didn't work, and that's a loss for the city. That's a loss of revenue for the city. So if we can fix those issues and gain the revenue without raising the rates, I believe that was a federal choice for the money, rather than to, to leave our system to lack data as it was. But that's just one of the reasons why they're changed.
On the waste of funds, are you gonna have the smart meters installed out of the city limits?
Uh, are you on Abernathy line, is that what you're talking about?
Our line ties with all the family ranch.
Yeah, you'll probably have a smart meter out there.
We will have smart.
You probably will. The, the, anybody that's on the Tri-Tri, Swenson, any of those lines, they won't. Now, the master meter will be, but not the new one. So, if you pay the city a bill, if you write your check to the city, you will have a new meter.
No, I pay another gentleman, my line is a dog law.
Then you won't have a new meter. So, that, that answer the question, is if you pay the city water, if you mail the check to the city of Ashramon, you will have a new meter. If you do not send it directly to the city, you won't have.
Okay, can you explain something else? I, I buy water from another gentleman. My line contains all seeds, all of this same line, that originally stood, that came off the thunder. Okay, the city does not lose my meters. The foreman for this gentleman brings my meter, and then I, in turn, pay the seller, that owns the line. Will I have, will there just be 9,000, or the second man, gentleman that owns the line, and then I, I, I pay under that? My meter's not there, I...
I would, the only way I can answer that is to look at the billing program, because I've got the list in front of me, and it's not on there, so you just get...
My line's not on your billing program.
Well, the individual that you paid, his name's not on my list, so...
Yes, it is.
No, ma'am, it's not on my list. I, my list is Tri-Tri, Swenson, Old Glory Southwest, Southside, Plainview, Sweet Home, Ed Gordon Jones.
Suzie, we'll, we'll look at it in the morning, and we'll, we'll send your questions.
I say, I have cattle on their toes, and I, I cannot take some water away from them.
You'll just have to, what I have to do is look at it, because, uh, if it's not in our system, you know. I don't have a list of that, so...
Yes, sir.
Will every PWS cover to our system according to your, your 2014 deadline of smart meters? Will they have to provide the smart meters, or get these old lead-lined meters out?
Yeah, y'all conventionally have to do that, too. Every, every PWS has to take as of September of this year. We cannot restock on ourselves any item that contains, uh, 0.25% lead, period. We can't buy, uh, anymore at all, that's a special order. But that, that's only for, you know, that has nothing to do with individuals. It has nothing to do with rolling, you wanna go buy whatever you wanna buy from them. And that law only applies to us and the farmers, that's all it applies to. But we have to follow them, and y'all will have to follow that as well, uh, when it comes down to it. You got to a 20th one?
About 20th one?
About 24th one, I'm sorry.
Questions, any more questions? Yes, sir.
Did anyone ever think that God might send the rain, and all of this?
Hey, I, I was praying hard today yesterday when the clouds were out, and going, "Please rain, or cancel the city meeting."
Any more questions? We have all the time on the road.
So, it's happened to those families, or husbands, or pre-...
Uh, I wanna read, let me, before y'all go, let me read this. This, this is the information you know the name. When Miller Creek puts us into their stage three, the city will go to stage four, will skip stage three, because it's getting very serious when he goes to that stage. So there's gonna be certain things that will go into that. At that point, you will not be able to water your grass at all, period. It's eight trees, your grass. You'll be able to go out and even mulch around your trees, and you'll be able to put water down around those. But you cannot water your grass. If you have a livestock pen in the city limits, probably gonna have to end up taking those cows somewhere else, selling them, or whatever that case is. Because when we go to stage four, it's gonna be very serious, otherwise I wouldn't go there, okay? But stage three, the changes are minute compared to what changes he's gonna hit me with with water outage. So, in order for me to produce enough water, potable legal water, that'll reach stage four, and there will be no watering of any grass, any bed, any kind of system. That's just where it is, that's, that's in our drought contingency plan, and the state regulates all of this stuff, that's nothing to do. But if we allow you to do it, the city is fine, not you as individuals. So, we have to follow these rules that we're doing, so. Say, if we can conserve water now, we won't go to stage four. But really, we can't go to stage three, but if he puts us in stage three, we have to go to stage four, we're already...
How do y'all notify us, or how can we know what stage four is?
We'll put it in the paper, we'll, we've got some posters, it's playing stage two.
I don't get the two, so I don't know.
Can you print it out?
He's printed, yeah, we printed all the rules, it's not on the...
I see that, but it didn't, I mean, future...
No more questions? See, can I, can I, can you look closer to where the... Dean?
Yes.
Would you mind sending it over here, close it out, please?
That's right.
We have to be there, we have to go close it out.
Yep.
That was probably just asking it. You remedy all of these situations, we know that you're more powerful than, than any, any of us, and that you, if we will come to you in humble repentance, then you will answer our prayers, and you will build the lakes, and the tanks, the streams will run, the grass will come out green, and you will answer all the questions that we could possibly have. We just place all of these things in your precious name. Amen.